Of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henan.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Valani.
Here.
Mayor Dean.
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda with the following changes. Adding a motion to receive the resignation of the city manager and approve the terms of a separation agreement as item number two. And adding a motion to create an ad hoc search committee for the selection of an interim city manager and a new city manager as item number three, subsequently moving everything down.
Thank you. So, motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Black with support from Councilmember Valani. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, I'm opening public comments. You may come up to the microphone tonight and speak on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. You'll have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind and in your heart. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. That does not mean we don't care. If your matter needs follow-up or attention from one of us or a member of city staff, there's a table right outside the door where you may leave your name and contact information. You have three minutes to speak. Did I say that? Well, it's still three minutes. Please state your name and city of residence.
Thank you. My name is Andrew Ossamacher, and I live 2163 Gardner, last 14 years. Madam Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have a question which I know cannot be answered by you at this time. But on our street of Gardner, north of 11 Mile, surveyors have come in and have done some major surveying, leaving marks on as if a large project is happening. I've came down here to the City Hall, and it seemed as if nobody knew what... The person I spoke to had no idea what the project is going to be. I was referred to go to DPW, asked the same question, what's going on? What's the scope? Apparently, they didn't know at the time. I have no concerns other than what the size of the scope that's going to be happening and to give us enough preparation to do... Enough time for us to prepare if a large construction is happening. I do know that Anderson School there is getting their football field and track is taken care of, but it doesn't seem... What I'm seeing on our street is related to that at all. And so, if there's some communications or something, the city could allow us residents to know what's happening. Again, just the scope of the job and maybe a timeline. Thank you very much.
Okay, last call for public comments. Okay, I'm closing public comments. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 40th Regular City Council Meeting on Monday, March 4th, 2024, and Special City Council Meeting on Monday, February 26th, 2024. Two warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1396. Three, motion number M1424. Matter of approving the agreement for IT services between Oakland County and City of Berkeley and authorizing the city manager to sign on the city's behalf. Four, ordinance number O324. Matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend Section 30-107 Inspection of Owner Occupied Business Properties of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to update the policies and procedures for inspection of owner occupied business properties. Five, proclamation number P224. Matter of receiving a proclamation of appreciation to former Mayor Maybel Frazier.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henan.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Black. Any corrections or additions?
Yes, actually, Madam Mayor, I have two.
Okay.
Thank you. In the meetings minutes for the closed... Or for the special session that was held on the 26th, the regular agenda indicates that I was the one that made the move to make the motion. That wasn't me. I don't know who it was, but it wasn't me. And then, on that same agenda item, I was the one that voted against it. I just wanted to make sure the record was clear that I didn't move and that I was a nay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on the corrected consent agenda. Sorry, regular agenda.
Gavin.
Consent, sorry.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions Presentations. Matter of receiving any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Thank you. I'll be reading a proclamation for Mayor Maybel Frazier. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, in appreciation of Maybel Frazier for her legacy of leadership in the City of Berkeley, whereas the City of Berkeley is a better place because of the contributions of Maybel Frazier throughout her life. Maybel was the first woman in the history of Berkeley to be elected mayor in 1995, following a two-term tenure on the city council beginning in 1989. And whereas, Maybel graduated from Berkeley High School in 1949 after ascending to her first leadership role as the secretary of her graduating class. And whereas, during her life, Maybel devoted her time and energy to many worthwhile causes in Berkeley that live on today. As a feminist, she was the driving force behind the establishment of Berkeley Moms' Club and served as its charter president from 1971 to 1973. In 2001, Maybel conceived and executed the building of the gazebo and historic walkway outside City Hall by fundraising for the project and recruiting both labor and community support to bring it to completion. And whereas, in 1974, Maybel was recognized by the City of Berkeley as its Citizen of the Year for her varied contributions as a community leader. And whereas, Maybel has earned the respect and appreciation of her community for all that she has contributed to the City of Berkeley throughout her life. Now therefore, the City of Berkeley proclaims, Section 1, that City Council on behalf of all local residents offers its genuine thanks and appreciation to Maybel Frazier for her dedicated service to the City of Berkeley throughout her life, introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on March 18th, 2024, Bridgette Dean, Mayor. And I know there are some members of Maybel's family who are here and some people that want to maybe say some words, so feel free to come up to the microphone if you'd like to do that.
Good evening. I am Sue Richardson, and I am Chair of the Berkeley Historical Committee. Because this is National Women's History Month, we thought it only fitting to memorialize Maybel with a display in the museum. And we were very fortunate that the family graciously loaned us various artifacts and clippings and papers from her collection, and that is going to be on display this whole month. So, we invite people to come and see it. It's, you know, a really remarkable display, and a member of her family actually put it together. And we are open right now, and also will be open after the council meeting if any of the council members who haven't had a chance to see it would like to stop in. Let me just add to what Mayor Dean has already read in the proclamation about Maybel's contributions to the city. She has been a friend of the history. She was an important resource when Councilman Baker, Jeff Tong, and I were putting together the book, The History of Berkeley. And one of the things that you will see in the collection, in the display, is Maybel cutting the ribbon on the museum back in 1991. So, you know, she... It's worthy for her to be memorialized for that, her contributions to preserving the history of the city. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carol Bowman, one of Maybel's daughters, and we just want to thank you for recognizing our mom in this way. And I know, when she was up there, as you are, she got a lot... It meant a lot to her when she could present people with something like this, because she truly appreciated everybody's contribution. So, thank you very much.
Okay. And with that, Ms. Mitchell, please read item number two on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion. Motion to receive the resignation of the city manager and approve the terms of the separation agreement.
Oh, is there a motion to approve? Sorry.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Mayor Protem Gavin.
Do you want me to start?
Apologies. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, the city council was presented with the terms of a proposed separation agreement for the city manager of the City of Berkeley. This is a customary transitional package regarding the outgoing terms and conditions of a tenured manager, such as the current incumbent who's been with the city for approximately eight years. The terms of the agreement will set forth certain components of the transition, outlining his departure date officially, while also ensuring his assistance in transition and consulting with both the incoming interim manager and also handing things off to a successor permanent manager. So, the action presented this evening is consistent with the terms of the employment agreement, and with your consideration, we would request your approval of those terms.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgartner?
Certainly will be... I'll be more robust in the coming time, but I just want everyone to know how much of an honor it's been to serve in this role. I look forward to making sure that the city is in the best position possible, as I've done for the last eight years, for whatever comes next and the future success that it will have. As I told councilmembers, my family and I were not going anywhere. We plan to remain in the community, and our family will serve it in any way that may come along. We look forward to being longstanding and members of the community for many, many, many years. So, even if this part of our history of the community is coming to a close.
Thank you. Any public comment? Any discussion from council? Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number three on tonight's regular agenda.
Agenda... Motion number M1624. Motion to create an ad hoc search committee for the selection of an interim city manager and a new city manager.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Black.
Support.
Mr. Baumgartner?
With my pending departure, there are a couple of things that need to happen to make sure that council can move forward on the business of the city. As the motion states, one of those things would be to find an interim manager to serve in the role in between myself and the next permanent manager, and then also find a firm to conduct that search. There are many opportunities. There are many firms that specialize in this, but the council will need opportunity to review proposals from those individuals, and then also likewise review the credentials of an interim manager, too. Creating an ad hoc committee allows for the best use of the time in between the meetings of the whole of council, so this is a good first step towards what's next.
Thank you.
Mike Wysocki, Berkeley. I'm very concerned about really council's oversight of city management and how city management has been operating. There seems to be no succession plan for any of the key roles in city management. We went over a year without a finance director, finally hired one, he lasted a month. I don't know what anyone could have done so egregiously to warrant termination after four weeks. I mean, you're still trying to find where the bathroom is in four weeks. So, I don't know... It seems like city council may be asleep at the wheel here, but I really encourage you to step up and to really get involved in what's happening in city management. I know that's typically not your role, but this is not good. And, you know, I wish Matt the best, but I do think this is a step in the right direction. But, you know, I mean, I don't know what you guys are going to do. You know, you have an interim finance director, you have now no city manager. You know, I mean, who's running the city now? So, again, you know, Mayor Dean, you're... It all... The buck stops with you. So, I encourage you to step up, take control, get involved, roll up your shirt sleeves, and solve this.
Thank you, Mr. Wysocki. Any other comments? Discussion from council? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Patterson.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four on tonight's agenda.
Presentation. Matter of receiving a presentation from the City of Berkeley Tree Board.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Carlos. I'm Chair of the Tree Board, and we put together a report to inform you, as well as our residents, of some of the things that we have done in the last year and a little bit of the focus of what we want to accomplish in this new year. And it's also an opportunity, I think you, as the council, appreciate all the volunteerism that goes on in our communities, whether it be on a formal board or commission or even all of our community activities. And I think the spirit of the people that participate in the Tree Board reflect that as part of what makes this community special. So, I just want to say that I appreciate you taking the time for us to do this, and also a chance for us to let the residents know what we do. I know, when I meet people in the community and I tell them on the Tree Board, the first question is, "What's that? What do you do?" So, hopefully, this will give everybody a little bit of a flavor. And let me just kind of do a little PSA at the beginning of this, and we have a couple of people that are going to be resigning from the Tree Board, or their tenures are coming to an end. For personal reasons, they won't be continuing on, and I just want to say, if you're a resident and you hear what activities the Tree Board's involved in, and it speaks to you, to consider applying for one of the open positions when they become available this year. So, I'm going to try to make this kind of short, but I kind of want to cover... There's so many things that we've done. We work, of course, with the DPW and the City Tree Program, and there were 20 new trees that were planted in the spring of last year, and an additional 249 trees were planted in the fall. 145 trees were removed, so we're getting ahead of the curve finally, where we're planting more trees than we're removing. And there was also 869 trees trimmed in the last calendar year. An important thing to us on the Tree Board is there were 20 different species of trees that were planted last year. So, it's something that... Our urban forest is very heavily populated with maple, and although we love the maple trees, we want to see a lot of variety. It also makes for a healthier tree forest. We... The DPW applied for some grants last year, which were not approved, but the year before that, we got approval for a couple of grants, and there's kind of a point system that they use. And one of the point systems is if you haven't gotten a grant in the previous year, you get more points. So, it kind of was a little bit against us, but maybe it will be okay when we apply again this year. We are a Tree City USA. As of last year, we have been a Tree City USA for 33 years. So, many people involved in the Tree Board before I came to the city helped lay the roots to be one of the early adopters, working with Arbor Day Foundation to get our city recognized in that way. We're also applying in 2024... Actually, the application goes in in December, so we applied to become a growth... To get the Growth Award, which is something that's given by the Arbor Day Society to communities that demonstrate higher levels of tree care and community engagement. So, we will hear about that maybe in another month or so, but we haven't heard yet if we've got that extra recognition. I know that Sean will come back to see you in April, because April 29th is when the National Arbor Day occurs, and we always, in our city, honor Arbor Day and plant some trees. But in the last year, we had two new trees that we planted as part of this celebration on the Boulevard of Cass near 11 Mile. Other things that we've done in the last year, Dennis has been working with Lawrence Sobson, who's the DNR Urban Forester for our region, and Dennis... So, Lawrence had made some recommendations for some minor revisions to our ordinance, and Dennis is working through getting that incorporated. And also, we look at information regarding pests and tree disease and invasive tree species. And Mike Lenaway, who is one of our Tree Board members, was the first one to alert us and give us an update on the spotted lanternfly. We also had Robert Miller report to us from the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development, where we learned that the spotted lanternfly can feed on many plants or trees, but they prefer the tree of heaven and grapevines. They're really kind of more of a nuisance. They lay their eggs in masses, and they were a little... There was some sightings made in Oakland County, so they're kind of on our radar to see what happens if you spot one in this area. They say you should squash it, and you should report it. So, just be FYI about that. As far as invasive tree species, we have... We had some tree of heaven in our city that were street trees that were removed, I think, in 2022, and we spotted some new growth in Oxford Park, and the DPW has that on their list of things to work on this year. For communication, we've been trying to work very actively with our community and our city communication channels to share information. We put together some information with the DPW to provide our residents information when they get new street trees, how to care for them. We developed a trifold brochure to help communicate to Tree Board goals to our residents, and the city paid for 500 of those to be printed and distributed through the Chamber of Commerce to new residents coming to our city. The DPW is continuing a process to create a GIS-compatible street tree inventory. So, back in the day, like in the late 90s, there was an official contract, somebody went through our city, they documented all the trees, and of course, once that was all documented, it was obsolete, right? Because we have trees that are newly planted, trees that are removed, and so, the DPW is now working on trying to make it more of a living document, and it's kind of a work in process, but they have about 1,000 trees in the city now documented, and I would say that's probably about 20% of the way done. They think that it will pick up speed as they move forward with it. We participate as one of many members of the community in the holiday parade. You may have seen us with our little tree float on a wagon. We also worked extensively with the... On the Berkeley Day, trying to reach out to our community last year. We had all members of our committee participated in some way or another, helping us to set that up. It was kind of a learning process for us, kind of... Some things we tried worked better than others, but it was really a good opportunity to get out and talk to people, and hopefully, the Tree Board's going to do some more community engagement like that in the future. We also have talked about here about the DPW has initiated a permeable pavement test. So, our trees that are our street trees that are in the downtown district are particularly in harsh circumstances, being surrounded by cement and not having perhaps good soil. And in the past, we've maybe graded some of them, and maybe that wasn't the best thing either. So, we're looking at whether permeable pavement in some of those areas might help those trees to thrive more than they have in the past. We also evaluated our gateways and common areas for tree coverage and consistency. I would like to see... We also... I think I missed something here. Oh, the residential tree giveaway is going to be one of the things we're continuing to look at. So, some of the other communities in Michigan have got some process where they provide some free trees to residents to plant on their property, and I know you may remember that we came to see you about a year ago, and we talked to you about the urban tree canopy and how we're trying to improve that. Well, as a city, we can only plant trees in the city properties and city right-of-ways, but to really achieve the vision, we want our residents to plant trees in their front yards and their backyards, and so, this might be an initiative to inspire some people to do that. Another thing that we did last year was the Slow Row Bike Group that meets up at the library typically on Mondays in the warmer weather, had reached out and said they'd be interested in knowing more about the trees. And so, we put together some... Three different tree tours that is available on our website. Could be a walking tour as well, if you like, just to give you a little bit of information about some of the different species and the variety of species that we have in our city. We are arranging for a library program. It was supposed to have occurred in February, and it got canceled, but it has been rescheduled this Wednesday. So, if you're interested in that, it's called Where the Sidewalk Ends: Choosing Resilient Trees for Tomorrow's Urban Environment. And the presenter is Lawrence Sobson, who is our DNR representative, and he's a very engaging young man who has... Sobson, who is our DNR representative. And he's a very engaging young man who has a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of information. And anybody that comes to that, I think will enjoy hearing what he has to say about the different kinds of trees that would work well in our environment. And with our climate change is something you have to consider that what is our climate going to be like to support trees 50 years from now, not just today. So we put together a document to start looking at our volunteer hours because sometimes that can be something that you can use when you apply for grants for matching funds. And I was able to document that our volunteers spent, added 340 hours of volunteer time and that's beyond the usual Tree Board business. And we estimate the value of that is over $10,000. Climate change will continue to be a concern. The board reviewed some resources that Tricia on our team, on our board had brought to our meeting. And Larry Sobson from the DNR also discussed the 10, 20, 30 rule, which is under ideal circumstances, you don't want more than 10% of one species, 20% of one genus, and 30% of one family in the canopy. So again, I talked earlier about how we have so many maples. That's really something we have to consider as we go forward. I know we have asked the, the DNR and they, to put a moratorium on planting, planting any more maple trees. And, and they've been honoring that recommendation. We also provided some recommendations to the DDA for what, what they can do to support trees in, in the, in those zones. For ongoing projects, we will always be working with the DPW to provide them some support and recommendations to continue the City Tree Program, to continue getting our Tree City USA recognition, to provide information on, on pest and tree disease and invasive tree species, the City Tree Ordinance, if it requires any updating or we have any concerns with, and to have general communications. But some other areas of focus for this year will be to continue to look at how we might develop and support a residential tree giveaway program. We're working perhaps with a historical museum to see if we can put together an Arbor Day display. And we will continue to do public outreach and education such as the Public Library Program that we're having this Wednesday. So that's all I have to tell you.
Well, thank you so much. That was a lot. And it was amazing, all the work that the Tree Board does and continues to do. 340 hours, volunteer hours is incredible and to be commended. That's a, a great commitment on the part of the members of the Tree Board. I also had a question about, is Tree City a yearly designation that?
It is. So every year in December, we send in our application and our evidence. And there's kind of four key pillars of the, in order to, to be recognized as a Tree City USA. And I'll probably not remember all four of them, but it has to do with, there's a certain limit of money that needs, needs to be spent per resident in the city on trees. So the tree, it's important that the city budget supports that. There has to be a Tree Ordinance in place. There has to be a Tree Board or designated city department responsible for it. And I knew I wouldn't remember all four.
It's okay. I also like hearing about the collaboration with the Historical Society. It's great when our different boards and commissions can get together and collaborate on an initiative and, and bring that to the public. So thank you both for that collaborative effort. And there are vacancies again, I'll mention on the Tree Board if anybody's, you know, dying to get involved. So thank you so much, Kathy. Sorry.
Yeah. And as the liaison to the Tree Board, I just want to thank all the Tree Board members for all their dedication. But I especially want to thank Kathy, who, our chair, who is going to step down this year, but she has been just great organizer and really great at chairing the Tree Board. And so she will be sorely missed.
Thank you, Dennis. And thanks for your work as a liaison and then I know you're involved. Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's agenda.
Presentation, matter of receiving a presentation from Communications Director Caitlin Flora regarding the city's new website.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Honorable Members of Council. My name is Caitlin Flora. I am the Director of Communications for the City of Berkeley. And the city has been working on a new and improved look and functionality for our website that I am excited to launch soon in early May. More details will be shared.
We're having another presentation. Sorry, it's just hard to hear.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes. So I'm excited to launch it soon in early May. More details will be shared in the near future on our current website, social media channels, and at a future, future council meeting. But today I wanted to share a bit of a first look at some of the improvements that are coming. So right here is what you see when you first land on the current city's website without scrolling past the homepage. The city's website has been ready for an upgrade for years. As you can see on the landing page of the current website, it doesn't really have too many actionable items. The headers don't necessarily convey everything that you might need to know. And you probably instantly get the sense that you'll need to dig for whatever information you're looking for. The search function does show up right in the middle, which is definitely very helpful to find the information that you need. However, this definitely could use some improvements to become more intuitive and become a more efficient communication tool. So over the years, plenty of community feedback has created very thoughtful conversations about how a new website could look and function. And this prioritized the need for a more user-friendly design. So once the new website launches, this is what you'll see without scrolling when you first land on its landing page. As you can see, you can instantly see the areas that are most helpful as eye-catching buttons. The headings are broken out into more intuitive titles and the general look is overall more modernized and inviting. I hope that it makes you want to explore, but you won't need to do much digging to get to the areas that you need to access quickly. The new website will be a very exciting tool for better communication, which I'm excited about. So once it launches, we will absolutely welcome feedback and make continuous improvements as we go. So now I'll show you a couple of sections that I am excited to improve. So this is the area on our current website where you go to pay your bill. This is not an area that shows up on the homepage of the current website and it does require some digging to get to. Then, once you arrive, there's a lengthy list of details and links along the side that you can click if you scroll through and don't find what you need right away. So then with the new website, you will instantly and easily find where you need to go to pay your bill from the moment you arrive on the landing page, because it's a quick option to navigate to right at the top of the homepage. The bill pay area of the new website is definitely more streamlined and easier to navigate as well, which means you'll take less time doing the things that you need to do. Now on the current website, again, connecting with city staff and reporting an issue is maybe not as easy as it could be. This is what the contact page for the current website looks like with this kind of list of departments and options to explore on the side if you know to look there for more information. However, on the new website, the contact page will pull up helpful information instantly and it will make it much more clear what to click to accomplish your goal. Ease of use and intuitiveness is definitely top of mind with the new updates we've been working on. Back to the current website, we do have a government header that encapsulates all of our departments. We do have this government header on our new website as well, but the new website will have sections both for residents and for visitors. If I'm someone who's just trying to visit Berkeley and see all the great things that it's about, I don't really need to comb through all of the government areas and look at things that are really targeted toward residents. And then the residence section on the new website will include quick links as well without having to skim through multiple lengthier dropdown menus. As you can see, the sections will be broken out into residents, which is pictured here, and visitors right from the homepage on the new website. And there are quick links that make it easier to find what you're looking for or to choose to explore. There also is an area for visitors that will have relevant links as well on the new website. So with that, I will conclude today's presentation. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Honorable Members of Council for this opportunity to share a first look. I'll be back in the near future to present a tour of the new website as we prepare to launch. Very excited for this new and improved tool to go live soon and stay tuned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Caitlin, very much. I know that this has been a long time coming.
Yes, I'm very excited.
And you kind of got dropped in, you know, when you took the role here as our Communications Director. So I want to thank you for your efforts to continue this, moving it forward and to get it ready to launch. It's very exciting. And I look forward to the ease of navigation and being able to find things more quickly and all the things that you said, the improvements that have been made. So thank you so much for that. Any discussion from council?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number six?
Motion number M1724, matter of approving the contract with Johnson Controls to complete Phase One of the HVAC replacement project at a cost of $1,936,690. This project is being funded by both a federal and state grant.
Is there a motion to approve, I have M1524. Is that correct?
Um.
Is it 17? Sorry, 17, yes. Is there a motion to approve M1724?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gavin?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Hannon.
Excuse me. 1724 is now our new number.
Right, but we added two, so everything had to.
The motions do too, okay.
Yep. Okay, yeah. Okay. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you recall, back in 2022, the city applied for, pursued and received a grant, two grants actually, to fund upgrades to the city's HVAC units around the various buildings. This has been a very long process and it takes quite a bit to satisfy state and federal grants. And they move at the, at a pace that is not quick, certainly not as fast as local government. But we're happy to bring this for you this evening. This is an opportunity to consider Phase One purchases. And so we have both Alex Brown, our Facilities Manager, who has done yeoman's work on, on getting this to this point, as well as representatives from Johnson Control here to show you a little bit about what's being proposed, what to expect in the near future, and really kind of overview of how we got even here and the work that is still outstanding.
Thank you.
Good evening. For you tonight, we have a proposal from Johnson Controls to work on Phase One of our HVAC replacement system, or HVAC system replacements. As Mr. Baumgarten mentioned, these are coming, being financed by two grants we were awarded from this, one from the state of Michigan and one from the federal governments being administered by the HUD administrator, or HUD Department. We're working with Johnson Controls through the Sourcewell purchasing contract. They've been working with us since day one on this project. More, it started out as a just kind of consulting role, kind of getting the ball rolling. And then we realized it was a good fit to work with them and move forward. And they've been putting in, it's just as much work as we have to get this project off the ground and up and running. Unfortunately, due to the time it's taken to get the grants finally authorized in, in, in our hands, costs have gone up considerably 30 to 35%, which has kind of limited the scope of what Phase One was going to be. This initially was planned to be all buildings all at once, kind of one, one project. But unfortunately, where we're at today, we're not able to complete that. The proposal before you guys has the, all the pertinent information. It's pretty, pretty in-depth here. And I'm going to bring up Joe Casterson from Johnson Control. He's been our liaison through this project. He's going to run you through a few slides, kind of some of the finer details that he's the expert on. So I'll let him kind of present that. And then if there's any questions, Joe or I will be able to help you out with those.
Thank you.
So first I want to say thank you very much for the opportunity to work with the city on this project. It has been quite enlightening since we were first brought in back in November of 2022. It was a question of, you know, there was a number of systems and equipment and components within many different buildings. And taking a very large overview of what was going to be the most efficient, the most impactful improvements based on obviously understanding that there's a limited budget and trying to pick and choose very carefully what items would fit within that. I am here tonight, but I'm one of a team of about 10 people that have regularly been working on this for the past year and a half. We have people that are experts in controls, actually doing the installation work. I myself bring the expertise in the actual equipment. So that is my primary focus and role within Johnson Controls. Again, in going through, it was not really understood exactly what the full scope or what the expectations where the city were looking for, just that the, you guys were aware that there was improvements that needed to be made to multiple buildings throughout the city. We discovered after really getting into things that a lot of the equipment is well beyond 25 years of age. Ashtray guidelines stipulate that 16 years is kind of the minimum replacement timeframe for a lot of equipment. That includes your package units, your handling units, your chillers. 16 years is about the useful life expectancy. There are multiple pieces of equipment throughout these buildings that are more than double that. So you guys are looking at 30 to 30 some years, particularly over at the Public Safety Building. That is obviously, including the pneumatic controls that is over in that building, is causing a lot of energy usage. The quotes that I've been told is that between this building and the building over there, the overall energy usage is a kind of equivalent to a research facility. That does not surprise me after getting into everything that we saw, including a number of the pneumatic controls and zone sensors and everything like that over at that Public Safety Building are not operational. That system is a very old way of doing things and takes a very, very carefully monitored approach if you're going to try and keep it beyond its useful life. It has reached its useful life. It, it is well on its way for needing replacement. Another point was that the main air handling unit that services that building provides all the airflow. It, it provides the heating, the cooling. That unit is what we like to refer to as just a start stop. So there is no variable speed. There is no opportunity to kind of adjust that based on demand or how many people are in that building. That building is not occupied to full capacity 24 hours, but it does run 24/365. So that is something that needs to be taken into consideration. But that motor is on all the time. And it's one of those things that, again, really carefully going through every single building, we really tried to find the most impactful and efficiency gainers that we could in the recommendations that we had proposed to you guys. And that's part of, you know, we were in doing our research and working with both Mr. Baumgartner and Mr. Brown, the 2019 sustainability goals and the city's efficiency and energy goals. The work that we're proposing will help the city get a long way towards actually reducing the energy usage. As far as the project focus, again, when we were first brought in, it was more of just that, you know, with this, they, we were found, we were engaged to basically look at, you know, kind of what the city had. The Sourcewell Cooperative is something that JCI or Johnson Controls utilizes all over the country. We work with municipalities, we work with government agencies, we work with schools, we work with universities. And it's something that, you know, we have found has been very helpful throughout the process to actually work very closely as a partner with the organizations that bring us in. We can kind of help focus where we need to focus on. This is what we do. This is what we are experts at. And, you know, kind of helping to make recommendations and obviously seeing what the city wants to do or what fits within your budget or your allotment is kind of the primary driver. Again, this focus specifically was energy usage and making the most impactful cost upgrades to what the city has. Because frankly, there is, again, most of the mechanical systems are severely outdated. Again, a little bit more of the Sourcewell Cooperative. It is national agreed upon pricing. It's national agreed upon markups. It, it is set in stone. We cannot deviate from it. We, it, again, it is an agreement that we participate in. There are a number of different vendors that do participate in, but we participate in it quite heavily throughout the country. Some of the local customers that we've actually done some rather large projects with just recently, the Detroit Water and Sewer Department, Great Lakes Water Authority, Detroit Public Schools. We've had a few projects with them within the past six months that have actually gone through and operated through this program. And then the other thing is trying to do the DTE energy utilization for the rebates. Currently, we're working with the, there's a lot of third-party equipment on this project. So it's not equipment that we manufacture or that we actually produce. It's things like Johnson Controls doesn't produce boilers. There's three large boilers on this project. There's three large boilers on this project. There's a number of variable frequency drives, again, improving some of the air handling units specifically across the parking lot there. Down in the basement, there's multiple air handling units that, again, they're constant start-stop motors. There is no varying how much those are going to work, so when they're on, they're on full speed, when they're off, they're off. But that is not a very efficient usage of energy or even within those systems. So, we're working carefully with the third-party equipment manufacturers and suppliers to see the best way to get the city the most value on those rebates. As of right now, depending upon the route that we take, we have a couple of different options. Because we are a manufacturer of a number of pieces of equipment, DTE through a local consortium called Energy Solutions offers us direct rebates as a manufacturer to provide discounts to the end user. Depending upon the sky, the size, the scope, and the phasing of the project, we have already applied some of those rebates to the tune of almost $6,000 to the equipment that we've proposed. There are additional rebates, though, through, again, those third-party companies and those equipment companies that we're trying to work with to see if we can continue to increase those, that funding. But ultimately, again, Johnson Controls views this as a partnership, and that's what we've been doing for the past year and a half, is trying to find the most impactful improvements to provide the city the greatest efficiency and cost savings that we can, and that's what we have presented with you guys here with the proposal and what we've worked on. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere.
I know that council has a lot of questions about this, and you mentioned increasing the energy efficiency.
Yes.
And I know that this is probably going to be difficult to answer, but do you have any sense of how long it would take to recoup, you know, the savings that are, or recoup the $200,000 shortfall in this project? With the energy savings, do you have a ballpark estimate? I know that the rates, if DTE changes their rates, all bets are off, but...
Weather patterns, so just to give you, for instance, the boilers that are at City Hall or that are at the Public Safety Building and that are at the library are currently operating, there are about fifteen hundred BTUs, sorry, million BTUs. Those units are operating at about a sixty percent efficiency, roughly, and again, without knowing the schedule of tube cleanings and everything else that's been done with that equipment, it's a little hard to say, but based on their age, approximately twenty-five plus years, you're operating at about a sixty percent efficient unit. The current units that we're proposing, including the redundancy, which is something that you guys currently don't have over at Public Safety, which we felt with the discussions with the city and with the members that were over there, that was a very high-value item, was to have some of that redundancy over there. Those units are going to operate roughly ninety to ninety-one percent. Again, it's a little difficult when you talk about commercial equipment like that, because it's not like a furnace or a residential piece of equipment that is ninety-six percent. It's got modulating capacities, it's going to very much be dependent on the design by the engineering firm that you guys have actually hired out to, as well as, again, what the load on the building is going to be. So, really cold, it's not going to operate at ninety-one percent, it might operate at eighty-seven. On a lighter load, it could operate at ninety-three to ninety-six. It really is going to be dependent on that. So, it's hard to put an exact dollar figure on. You can, but the other thing that is part of this project is actually a controls component. So, it's adding a fully monitored and managed control system to these buildings, which, again, we discussed briefly, the pneumatic controls that's over at Public Safety and how it isn't really operational. Being able to track that building and really track the areas that are getting high usage and being able to turn off certain areas when they're not going to be used, that is a very difficult thing to put a quantifiable number on, just because we don't know how it's being used right now. I know in all the observations and all the time that I've spent over there, I don't think I've ever been over in that building when that is off.
Okay.
So, that alone, also adding a variable frequency drive to the main drive on that big air handling unit that's in that second story, again, you're talking about going from a twenty horsepower motor operating at, you know, the numbers don't really matter, kind of, but it's about approximately twenty to thirty dollars a day, depending upon, again, whether or not that is fully on. It could be a little higher, it could be a little lower with that particular unit. You're going to be able to reduce that down to five percent, adding a variable frequency drive to it. So, if you don't have anybody besides in dispatch, the rest of the building isn't operational, or there isn't anybody that's in there, the rest of the building only needs to be set or maintaining a certain temperature. It's not going to be eighty-five degrees or trying to achieve eighty-five degrees when it doesn't really need to.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion from council? Council member Hannon?
Yeah, and some of these might be financial questions for staff. So, the new service contract, is that more than, what does it cover, and is it covering more than we're doing now, or, you know, just explain that?
Absolutely. It's going to be an all-inclusive contract. It's going to cover the basics of filter changes, belt changes, I believe it's quarterly, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, quarterly maintenance on all the new, all the new equipment that'll be installed at Public Safety and the library, as well as maintaining the older equipment at this building, DPW and the community center, until we make, you know, the next move to replace all those. It's also going to include power washing of the new chiller.
Maintenance of the glycol system, which again, currently at the library is not being done and hasn't been done, a number of maintaining the air handling units that are, again, in that basement that operate some of the equipment and service some of the areas that are down there. But it is a comprehensive maintenance program to even maintain the existing equipment that is not getting replaced.
As well, as well as expanding with the new controls and the virtual servers and all that that are going to make day-to-day use a lot easier for everyone, that's going to be included in some of the maintenance as well. They'll come out and do maintenance on our servers four hours a month or something like that, as needed, yeah, as needed.
So, we're, in essence, we're going to be properly maintaining the new stuff and buttoning for that, and we're going to be doing a better job maintaining the existing things we already have.
Absolutely.
This, it's about a hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred and ninety off the top of my head, and is that, are we paying that one lump sum or over the five years?
No, that'll be broken down into five years. It'll be whatever it breaks down to, I don't have that number in front of me, but it'll be built into my, my facility budget as a five-year running thing. So, that hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars can, I don't want to say can come off the total of the price, because it's not being paid upfront like the rest of the, the project will be. So, it's that two hundred thousand that Mayor Dean had alluded to, that kind of goes away, or gets spread over that five years. It's not upfront.
Okay. And when's our first payment on that? Is that this fiscal year, next fiscal year?
Well, that would probably be after July one, I would assume. Depending how fast, if, depending upon approval tonight and how fast paperwork can be processed through Johnson Controls and through internally, I would say that first payment probably wouldn't be due till the new fiscal year.
Yeah, so it's, we have time to make sure that we have it in our budget.
Absolutely.
And, let's see. Usually on contracts like this, we have a ten percent contingency, so is there, with it being a fixed-price bid, is there any need for that here, or are we kind of covered?
We feel fairly confident from the amount of work that Johnson's put in and HRC and myself have gone through, we feel fairly confident that the pricing that we have in front of us is the pricing we're going to pay.
Okay.
That we're not expecting, you know, not going to want any big surprises, but that's, that we're fairly confident the major components that may need, that may provide the surprises won't.
Yeah, and then the last thing, we had, there were two line items that were listed to be determined, so, you know, what are we looking at for?
Yeah, the first line item, I believe, was for the rental equipment potentially for the Public Safety Building. Initially, when we spoke with Johnson to start the process, we talked about that building's twenty-four seven, can't really afford to be down, and it actually seems like it's going to work out more beneficial for us to have three, three crews in there. So, basically, working twenty-four hours a day for a shorter period than to have just an eight-hour shift in there and have rental equipment. So, that's kind of was left in there as a TBD, but that's not going to be something we're foreseeing having to be used. And then, the other item was engineering, and like I said, we have contracted with HRC, they're doing the bulk of the engineering, and Johnson Controls has done a lot, kind of, as starting up this project and building the partnership with us, that it's going to, it's kind of built in already that we don't foresee any future costs there either.
Okay, so often, if we would have gone through a different bidding process, we would have been on the hook for those engineering costs.
Right, right, and we'd probably be, it just, I would say, doing a traditional RFP process, we would probably still be in the infant stages of that. It was such a long process with the specs required for the complexities of these buildings. I think this is the streamlined version of it, and we're going to get a better product at the end of the day.
And which, during that time, prices would increase and we could buy it in line?
Right, more than they already have, exactly, yep. And we'd be even further behind, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion from council? Any, sorry, did someone, any public comment on this item?
Good evening. Tom Merritt, thirty-one, twenty-six, Catalpa. Just a quick roll-down capital expenditures one-on-one. I'd urge the council to table this motion for the time being. You have an outgoing city manager, which you have no replacement for yet. We went through, we're already having problems with our finances. As far as capital scope, I know this is two million dollars, which doesn't buy as much as it used to. I don't think it's been made clear what has been cut out of the scope, how we intend to find the funds in whether a one-year, a three-year, or a five-year to finish the remainder of the scope. The gentleman here, their company is already being sued by one city, so are we going to be city number two to sue them? And you told me that somebody came in and they can't make a, an energy calculation when we've been doing an engineering study for two years. So, none of these questions are being answered. Just to give my background, half a billion in industrial automation, capital projects, plant design, two engineering masters, one master's in finance. So, I would argue that we hold off until we get a new city manager.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Greg Duross, three-seven-nine-five, Bacon Avenue. So, just in listening to this, actually, before I begin, let me ask you, Victoria, did you get an email from Joshua Hunter, and are you going to read that into the record?
Yes.
Okay. I've come up with, myself and Mike Weisack, are you going to come up, or you want me to read these questions?
Yeah, feel free.
I don't expect that we're going to have all these answers tonight, and I'm here to second the fact that I think some of these questions need answers before you act. So, let me just run through them so you can hear them and inform your decision on whether to table this till you have more information. Were there bids? Could you explain to us what, in the absence of bids, how you arrived at a decision to use Johnson Controls? What percentage does Phase One represent considering that these grants were ideally going, originally thought to cover the entire project? So, what percentage of the work is being done? What is the estimated timeline for the work? The condition and useful life of the remaining equipment, and how will that be funded? Who does the actual installation? Because one of the things that concerned me was the fact that I heard multiple people, perhaps being, companies being involved in this, and I immediately thought of finger pointing when something doesn't go the way it was supposed to. How will the $200,000 gap be filled? What will be cut? I think we need some better understanding, because we certainly didn't get it in the answer to your question, Madam Mayor, as to whether the savings will cover the gap and how long that will take. What's the impact on our reserve funds? Why is the warranty so weak? How will Phase Two be funded and when? Has the maintenance contract been scaled to the fact that we're only doing two sites when originally there was talk that there would be five sites? What is, what if something breaks in the old equipment and they're maintaining it? I could go on, but you get the point. I think a lot of these questions, frankly, I think all these questions need answers that you're comfortable with before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion from council?
My questions were largely informed with the concerns from residents, and I'm satisfied they've been answered and that this is a reasonable contract. If we wait, what would be the impacts if we wait?
I mean, higher prices, just like they have been. I mean, we've been at this for a year and a half, and it's about thirty to thirty-five percent. I mean, depending how much longer, I think they've scheduled price increases just across the board with labor and equipment that, it doesn't matter if we wait, it's just, they're going to go up. There's not, it's not going to ever go down.
Yes, and I, and I don't think it matters that we can't do as much as we wanted to. That's the reality we're in, and we're going to have to figure out how to do it, but we have this federal and state money that is allocated for this and only this purpose, and so, we should take advantage of it. The maintenance costs are going to be here with or without these systems, so that extra, you know, $200,000 is not like a over-budget item. It is a necessary part of running our equipment. So, so I have heard the concerns, I've listened to them, carefully considered them, and think this is ready to go forward.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion? Oh.
Charles Terrill from Berkeley. A concern for me beyond not bidding this, not having the minimum three bids for the city's purchasing policies, this is being funded federal and state grants. Federal grants especially require the use of minority women, small business, veteran-owned businesses. How is that being addressed through JCI? I didn't see anything in, in what I've been able to read so far that addresses that concept that is included in every federal grant that I've ever seen, has an inclusion in there for the use of small businesses, minority-owned businesses, women-owned, veteran-owned businesses. So, we need to get that answer as well.
Thank you.
Ken Mike Weisack from Berkeley. I'm not disputing the fact that the equipment is probably outdated and needs to be replaced, but when you have a scope of 1.9 million dollars and you're not going out for competitive bids, I think that's extremely irresponsible. You know, the, how do you know if 1.9 is a good number? Do you know? I mean, I don't think you can, right? You have nothing to compare it to. So, if you approve this, I think it's extremely irresponsible. So, I would encourage you to table this, go the proper route, do the competitive bidding that's required, so you can make an honest and educated decision on whether Johnson Controls is the right option, or if there's another vendor out there that may have a better proposal at a better price. But you won't know if you don't do it.
I have one additional short comment. I just want to clarify that I don't necessarily think that we should wait until we have a new city manager. We have a facilities manager, and if he's, we hired him to handle projects like this. We hired him to console the city manager and through the city manager inform you. If he's not up to the job, then we have a different kind of problem. And you really need to have confidence in him before you go forward. If you don't, then you need to talk about what you should be doing next. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm closing public comments. Councilmember Hannon?
Yes, the, I am comfortable with the procurement process. It is a, they provide a menu of options and a menu of companies with fixed pricing that they had to competitively to get into the system to begin with. There are deficiencies in our procurement ordinance. The issue is, it is antiquated and does not handle these new processes that streamline and save costs in the long run. And so, I am perfectly comfortable that we have done our due diligence on this, and this is ready.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-1724.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number seven on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M-1824, matter of approving- Motion number M 1824, matter of approving the Berkeley Art Bash event on Saturday, June 8th, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on 12 Mile Road for the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce, P O Box 72-1253. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates.
Is there a motion to approve M 1824?
Some.
Support? Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the first of two applications coming before you from the Berkeley Chamber. This is their annual event that they have run for, for many, many years now. We have reviewed it at the department level, Public Safety, Public Works, as well as Recreation. And my office have all taken a look at this. We find it to be pretty, pretty standard for what they present in the past. This year differently from years ago is that this is the first year we're implementing the city's updated community events fee schedule. And so there will be a charge to the, to the chamber. We will charge them for the closure of the street per our, our ordinance. And then we are, as we've been the years past, been in kind sponsors to this event. We'll have the staff provided onsite as part of our contribution to this event. So the, not the full fee schedule, but as noted in that fee schedule, the city manager does have the ability to tailor costs accordingly. And this is, as we discussed with the chamber, this was the best for both events where the city is still compensated for the work that it does in advance of the closure, but is still able to support this worthwhile community event that drives so many people into our community as well as into our businesses and it helps all the way around. So we're proud to both be partners as well as an approving body for, for this item.
Thank you.
I believe the chamber's represented here this evening.
We have Darlene Rothman and Emergency Manager Blanchard with us this evening. Additional comments or information that you want to share with us?
We appreciate all the support that we have had for both the Art Bash and the Berkeley Street Art Fest for the last several years. And yes, it is one of the strong draws to the community on those days. It's usually one of the strongest selling days, restaurant days for the businesses on those streets. And a major part of our goal of doing these events is to be a fun day in the community and to bring people to our businesses so that they come back even after those events. But we always know that there's other side things that probably happen with that too is that people comes to this community, they see what's going on and hopefully they might be moving here, they might be thinking of bringing their business here. You're just bringing a whole nother perspective of the streets, especially when they're closed, to really get a direct feel for what's going on. And I always overhear people say they never knew about some of these businesses because they drove past it, they didn't walk past them in the middle of the street. And as much as no one wants to hear that someone didn't see their business, there is a great perspective on it. And each year, the attendance keeps growing. Last year, we had a little rain and we're going to, we're doing our sundance so that we don't have any more rain. But we actually had a lot of people still come to the, to the event even in the rain, which is the dedication of people knowing that they're coming to a welcoming community and a safe community. And we're adding more evenly up to it, supporting the arts in the community. And so it's even tying everything even more together with a nice ribbon going through many of the, the summer months.
Well, speaking of safety, Jack, would you like to weigh in on this?
Yes, we will continue our past practice of, of developing an emergency operations plan, which will include an incident action plan. Those will be very comprehensive and will be posted on O K O C, which is the county's platform. So all of the other agencies in the county will know what we're doing. They will have access to it. Along those lines, the OCTAC, which our chief is a member of or president of actually, has formed a subcommittee for events. And part of that is because the way we've been doing things, we want to get that out to the other agencies in the county. So there'll be a subcommittee, so it'll be looking at good practices, things that other, other agencies have done, things that we've done, so we can incorporate those into our planning. And so we're looking forward to starting that very shortly and incorporate that into all of these plans that we do for these events. So we're very confident this will be a safety event and should come off like it has in the past, being a very welcoming event for the people around the area and being very safe for our residents and our visitors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Any public input on this agenda item? Discussion from council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. More of just a comment than, than a question. I want to thank the chamber, thank our emergency manager, and thank all the businesses that are involved in this and, and those that benefit from it and the proximity of it too. This is one of the signature events that our city hosts and it's fantastic to see this here again. And I know that the, at least I can speak for myself, that I too will be doing the, the Sundance as we head into this here to ensure, you know, it's an even more pleasurable experience for folks. But, but please come, make sure you bring some tote bags because you're going to, you're going to leave with some cool merch and good things. So I'll very much be in favor of supporting this tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M 1824.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes, the motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number eight on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M 1924, matter of approving the Berkeley Street Art Fest event on Saturday, July 13th, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Coolidge Highway between Catalpa and Beverly for the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce, P O Box 72-1253. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates.
Is there a motion to approve M 1924?
So moved?
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani with support from Councilmember Patterson. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Much the same applies to this application as well. We took the same approach with assessing fees under the city's fee schedule. The city or the chamber has, this is a newer event, but the chamber has a very good track record of, of making sure that this is a safe event that meets several of the same objectives. It drives people to downtown, this time in our Coolidge portion of our district. So we feel it's worthwhile to support them in the same manner by providing some of the day of staff without charging it directly to them. Again, all the same departments looked it over. We do feel that it is worth recommending to council for your consideration.
Thank you. Darlene, anything to add? Jack?
Ditto.
Okay, that works.
Ditto.
Any public input on this agenda item? Discussion from council? Yes, Councilmember Vilani?
I just want to thank Darlene and the chamber and all of the volunteers that make both of these summer art festivals successful. I remember when the Street Art Fest was first out just a couple of years ago. I was living on Franklin right down the block. And I remember walking down the end of the street and seeing like, okay, that's a cute little festival. And how it has just grown exponentially over the past few years is just a testament to the hard work that all of you do there. The business or the, the volume of people that come and drive business in our city. And it's just something that I know my whole family looks forward to every year and that lots of others do as well. And the fact that, you know, our community members get to create art there as well, which hopefully will not be washed away so quickly this year. It's just a really cool event that I think is very different than what other cities are doing. So just kudos to everybody there that puts a lot of effort in to make this happen.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
I was going to say ditto, but I think.
It's the buzzword of the evening. Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M 1924.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. M 1924 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number nine on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M 2024, matter of considering the special land use approval for 2758 Coolidge. The applicant, Daniel Haberman, on behalf of Upper Michigan Land Company, is requesting approval for the occupation of the property to be used as an office in the downtown district on the east side of Coolidge Highway, south of Franklin Road.
Is there a motion to approve M 2024?
So moved?
Motion made by Councilmember Henan.
Support.
With support from Mayor Protem Gavin.
I would defer the director.
Ms. Kaplansky.
Thank you and good evening. As the clerk mentioned, this is a special land use request for first floor office use in the downtown district. In our downtown district, this is a special land use and other districts, this would just be a principal permitted use. This would be in the former vitrine space. When you're reviewing this decision, the council should consider the standards in section 138, 653 of the zoning ordinance. Those have been detailed in your packet along with comments from staff on each. Any decisions that you make should tie back to those items. And staff has reviewed the request based on how these standards have been applied to other first floor office use requests in the downtown district and find that those standards have been met, again, as they've been applied historically across the board. The Planning Commission made the same finding and a positive recommendation at their February 26th meeting. There was quite a bit of public comment that's detailed in the Planning Commission minutes that were provided. And there were a few public comment emails as well.
Thank you. Speaking of public comment, is there anyone here that would like to speak to this agenda item?
Well, there's three of us, but I'll let the gentleman go first and we'll speak out.
Okay.
So please.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Dean, members of council, thanks for hearing me tonight. I'm Dan Haberman, a longtime local, small business owner. And I'm here on behalf of my company, Upper Michigan Land Company, as you've heard, as we seek special land use approval for first floor office at 2758 Coolidge Highway. Upper Michigan Land is a successful Michigan business that was founded over 25 years ago. We buy, sell, and finance Michigan forest land and control hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of beautiful forest land up north. We're looking to relocate our headquarters, which is currently in Troy, to Berkeley. And we're very excited for the chance to become a part of the Berkeley community. The review standard, as was just mentioned, is laid out in the code and provides five standards for, for special land use approval, stating that the application shall be approved upon a finding that, one, the proposed use will promote the use of the land in a socially and economically desirable manner. Here, a space that's currently vacant will be filled with a multi-decade Michigan small business, bringing economic activity to a vacant building and adding to the beauty of the downtown district. This first standard is satisfied. Two, the proposed use is necessary for public convenience at the location. Here, the location will allow for clients, contractors, and agents of Upper Michigan Land convenient access to the business and at the same time lessening nearby parking demand, making it even easier to park, shop, dine, and spend money in downtown Berkeley. The standard is satisfied. Three, the proposed use is compatible with adjacent land uses. Here, we have a perfect fit with existing retail food and indeed office in the same district and even on the exact same block. The standard is also satisfied. Four, the proposed use is designed so that the public health, safety, and welfare is protected. Here, this small office use will obviously not cause any detrimental effects to public health, safety, and welfare. And indeed preserving the high level of charm and character in the district is an asset for public health, safety, and welfare. The fourth standard is also satisfied. Fifth, the proposed use, in the last standard, the proposed use will not cause injury to any other property in the neighborhood. Here, of course, the proposed use will not have a negative effect on any other property. And indeed revitalizing a vacant space can lead to increased property, property values, satisfying the last standard as well. As you know, the Planning Commission did review these standards and recommended that the special land use be approved because it so clearly satisfies the standards laid out specifically in the code. And today I ask that you would approve as well. If I might go just a little bit beyond that as.
Actually, I started timing you on the clock behind you, so you have about 35 seconds.
Oh, wow. Okay. Well, I'd love to address in advance, I think, some of the comments that might come. As I know that there are some neighbors upset that a beloved and fantastic owner operator in Berkeley chose to close her business. I know she gave her all to the city of Berkeley and I have great respect for her relationship with the city. And, and I would hope to have a chance to, to emulate that in any possible way. And I just want to highlight that that was in fact her independent business decision. I am an outside purchaser eager for the chance to come work in Berkeley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No comment here. I send this right to the city councils, Madam Mayor.
State, state your name, please.
Yeah, my name is Roman Laskovich. My wife is Uli Laskovich, who runs Allman's Health and Beauty, which is one of the neighbor businesses, the corner of Coolidge and Franklin. Our comment is that our business is for buildings not of the property under discussion. We love Berkeley because it has somewhat, somewhat walkable downtown district with retail stores and various places to eat. This environment gives us all a sense of community. In recent times, several office buildings were newly established on Coolidge Highway. The continuous add-on of office buildings on Coolidge Highway threatens the beginning of a booming downtown. Besides that, we believe that permitting the special land use request for office use in the downtown district would run counter to the standards stipulated in the ordinance section 138 and 653. The planning committee or the planning commission listened to the comments, but I think here the, they appeared in the recommendation quite uninformed about the place. But was in discussion because first they looked at outdated plans and really I don't think that they really knew what they were talking about. So comment here first on the first standards. The proposed use will promote the use of land in a socially and economical desirable manner. Long office use instead of retail in downtown district will not promote the socially and economically desirable utilization of the land. Retail spaces typically contribute to vibrant street life and economic activity in downtown areas. Whereas an office use might not generate the same level of pedestrian traffic or contribute to the districts with vitality. There are several other retail estate businesses on Coolidge Highway as well as on 12 Mile Road. And you may certainly know them. And regardless of the design of the facade and the nice look outside, there's barely any sign of life, nor any attraction for going shopping in that area. Lack of public convenience, this was the second standard. The proposed office use does not serve the public convenience at the specified location as required by the ordinance. Unlike retail establishments that provide direct access to goods and services for residents and visitors, an office use for real estate business does not offer the same level of public benefit or accessibility. There is here the incompatibility with adjacent land uses. An office use in a downtown retail district is incompatible with adjacent land uses and disrupts the cohesive correct of the area. Our retail stores complement each other and contributes to a diverse and dynamic streetscape. Whereas an office use does not blend seamlessly with surrounding retail establishments. It makes it also less desirable as a target to various city events like the Ladies Night Out.
Thank you, Mr. Laskovich. Thank you.
Yep.
Hello. My name is Julie LaFrancoise and I have lived in Berkeley for 26 years with my husband, Ben, who's back there. He's a teacher in the district and we have four kids that have gone through. I look at my time, so I'm running out already. But I just want to say that everything that Berkeley is doing to promote small business and to encourage people coming to the city to shop is working. So I know that because I work at Perch and people walk into Perch and they say, wow, Berkeley's really good. Berkeley's different. I grew up in Berkeley and it's really changed. And look how far we've come. And they say things like, it's come so far. Where else can we eat? Where else can we shop? So there's a lot of discussion about the progress that Berkeley has made with all the chamber and the councils and everything. So I'm happy about that part. I also am happy about attracting new businesses like Perch. So the things that the council is saying in their plan about attracting new businesses, that's working too. The road diet has cut down on traffic and that has also worked. We have a walkable district now where people can walk around to the shops and they can walk from the little cluster that we have of Perch to the new bombshell, to almonds, to the bookstore. So it really is working, the food diet. A lot of people complain about it, but it is working. Another thing that is working is the murals, the murals that we have put so much money into and so much time. They do attract a lot of attention and people do think it looks like a lively. So, I know that they come in to look for new home goods at Perch. So, these are young people that are buying homes in Berkeley and are digging roots and setting their homes up there. So, I encourage the council to continue on and to keep retail and restaurants in downtown Berkeley so that we can keep the momentum going that has already started. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
My name is Desiree Dutcher. I am a Berkeley resident and local business owner. I stand before you today not in opposition of the gentleman purchasing the building, but with regards to the special use. As far as the section one thirty-eight dash six five-three, the fourth, hold on, where is it? There is five bullet points that need to be met. The fourth is the potential harm to other properties. That is listed as a proposed use will not cause any detrimental effect to other properties in the neighborhood. That's also stated as businesses, not just properties. The other businesses in the neighborhood thrive on having the downtown dynamic, walkable, and place-making terms that are listed in the master plan. They thrive by working together. So, with Toadvine, Almonds, June and December, Perch, Jen and White, all of the retail businesses in that area, they need other retail businesses to become and stay dynamic and walkable. Unfortunately, if we take a look at that block from Kettlepa to Wiltshire, there are already seven office buildings in that area. In addition to four, yeah, four medical offices and a number of hair salons, but hair salons bring people. My only concern is that this building is for sale. The buyer will be buying the property as well as the tenants who lease from it. Half of that building is a restaurant use, and then the other half was retail. Changing it could lead to perhaps the whole building being changed and really impacting that block. We can't prevent someone from buying a building, and we don't want it to be empty. But I urge you to consider whether or not an office is the right space for that location. We fear that granting the special use of an office will harm the other retail properties in the neighborhood and decrease foot traffic resulting in the app, oh, wait, and decrease in foot traffic from the resulting absence of a retail establishment. It may have an adverse effect on the willingness for others to shop in that area, let's say on a ladies' night out or other evenings when close proximity is what drives people to certain areas of our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hello, council. Thanks for all that you do. This is a tough night to be here, I think, in many respects, and I'm coming to you as a former business owner. You guys know me from the Berkeley Chamber. I own a couple of buildings on Twelve Mile, but most recently you've probably seen my name on some real estate signs. Susan, the owner of the building in question, asked me to represent the building when she told me she was leaving in Berkeley. This was super sad news for me. I feel all of your pain completely. As a former business owner, working with other business owners, it's crucial that we all stick together. I was thankful for the opportunity. I felt gratitude as she felt at best somebody sell this building who was entrenched in Berkeley. She had several years of dedicating her time, her money shaping this corner. She was a pioneer for this corner, and a lot of this opportunity that we see right now would not be here because of, if she wasn't here, and I truly believe that. So, it is a loss on many levels. But here's the reality, retail is really hard. It's like super hard, like really, really hard, and everybody in this room understands that. I'm sure in a post-COVID world, let's like take hard and make that times two. Retail is tough. Commercial real estate is going through its own moment past post-COVID. Interest rates are high, money is not easy to come by. A small business owner is gonna have a hard time buying buildings right now. I can't even get people financed in a larger sense for bigger buildings who have a lot of money. To fill a twelve-hundred-square-foot footprint, to say the least, is challenging in retail right now for not just Berkeley, but as a whole. So, investors want triple-net leases, they want high rents. Small moms and pops want shorter leases and sometimes can't pay market rent. This is just the reality. We do not want a revolving door. We do not want vacancies in this town. This is another dose of reality. Susan did not get one offer on this building from a retailer, not one. We did get looks from investors and developers who had solid plans for the, or did not have solid plans for the space, way more controversial than this. Susan felt comfortable with Daniel Haberman's plan because he was an owner-operator, he's gonna be there every day, he's gonna look after this building, and he's gonna make sure it looks awesome. That was really important to her because we all know Susan, and she likes aesthetics. So, I hope you guys can hear this from two sides. We've had a lot of retail leave because and turn into service business. That is just the nature. I am so far passionate about this town and love to see as much retail as possible, but twelve-hundred square feet right now, I also don't want to see vacant. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Molly Patterson. I and my husband own two-seven-one-seven Coolidge Perch, and we are here tonight to voice our opposition to the special land use for office space. And we are here to request it remain retail restaurant as this has already shown to be a viable and successive use of this space, and that vitrine left voluntarily to move to another city to open up a retail location. When we were searching for a property, and we looked in many places, interesting, we looked at Mr. Haberman's on three-one-seven-one Twelve Mile, which did sit vacant for a long time. We ultimately purchased our building on Coolidge. Many of the reasons for selecting this was because of the significant downtown, the beginning of the significant downtown development that was already in progress, such as the road diet, providing street free storefront parking, safe walking areas, and established and new businesses. In the past year and a half since we've been open, I'm sorry, I'm a terrible public speaker. We've been thrilled with our location. Our store sales have almost tripled in the past one and a half years, which is amazing. I credit our beautiful building and our visible location, our significant financial investment, our social media outreach, and most importantly, the Berkeley residents who very much want a walkable, shoppable downtown area with great restaurants. We were very disappointed in the February commissioners' meeting for, to observe that they were using old maps showing vacant buildings instead of what the reality of our three-block area is. There aren't any vacant buildings. Vitrine is now vacant, but it wasn't at the time of the meeting, and that having office space instead of retail would be, would negatively impact other businesses. It's gonna leave a hole in our shopping area, it's gonna create a vacuum, you're gonna have entire half of, entire block, half of one side of the street of one block that has nothing to offer walkers and shoppers and people looking for restaurants. On any given day in our, in our Coolidge area, we have customers from all over the tri-county area. We have people from Grand, the Grows Points, Bloomfield, Birmingham, Ann Arbor, Royal Oak, and they come and they say, "Who knew Berkeley was the place to hang out?" They're surprised by what we have to offer, and I know my time is up, and I'm up here shaking, so I hope you'll consider this.
Thank you.
Likewise, again. I was just curious why the DDA isn't here and maybe what their position is. Have they offered an opinion, any recommendation, anything? I just, I thought that maybe someone here would be here from the DDA.
Technically, I am the new vice chair of the DDA as of last Wednesday, so...
Congratulations.
I cannot speak to the whole entire board. We did briefly discuss this topic at last week's meeting. The consensus was that we wanted to closely work with both the planning commission and the city to see if there was a way that we could be on the ground floor in helping bring businesses, desirable businesses, to the buildings in downtown. That being said, it's not, you know, an official yes or no because the DDA's job is to support every business that comes within its downtown, whether it is retail, office, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Nick Appleyard, Perch owner. That's my wife over there, so thank you for your time. I'll make it, I'll make it very brief here. So, first of all, we've got momentum, okay? We have a retail momentum at the moment on Coolidge, all right? So, I want to just remind a few people that, you know, we have the Art and Bash, Art Bash Show, which is on a Saturday, and that, and when that's held, an office building is not gonna be open on a Saturday, okay? It's closed. It's a dark building on a Saturday. So, by having an office location there, we're basically excluding another opportunity to build up on this event that the DDA invests in on Coolidge. So, there's a lot of advantages, obviously, of the retail business. The lady behind me said the retail is not a growing business. She's right. It is a tough business to be in, but that doesn't mean you just give up and not invest in it, okay? The office business is a tough business as well. In fact, the business, the company I work for rents out office buildings, and that's always practically empty all the time. So, it is a tough business in general, even in the office side of things. If you look at Coolidge in general, you know, I was working there about a month ago on a Saturday. Actually, myself and Ben were working in the building while my wife and Julie were out, and we had, at the peak in the afternoon, we had thirty people walking to the shop. People actually driving down to Coolidge, parking the car, had a group of ladies get out of the car and walk in there, walked around. They actually bought a ton of stuff, and they said, "Okay, we want to go somewhere to eat, we want to go for some lunch somewhere. What'd you recommend?" And so, we recommended some restaurants on Coolidge. So, as I said, we have some momentum, it's got some vibe going to it. I feel as we have an office there now, it's just gonna kill it at the weekend, okay? And we're gonna kill it, an opportunity where we can actually have a quite a nice little thriving area. So, I do oppose the office. I think we need, I think we do need to invest in retail. I know there's been concern with regards to having a building vacant, but you gotta remember, before that, before we bought the Veterans Building, that was vacant for some time, and we came along and put quite a bit of money into that building, and look what it is today. Okay? So, I'd like to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm closing public comments. Discussion from council. Councilmember Henin.
Yes. Um, as for the vacancy, it's been, you know, I know the plans have been to move out longer than a month, but it's really only been vacant for a month, and, you know, will retail move into it if we say no? We don't have a crystal ball, we don't know for sure, but I'm willing to wait and be patient. I think that the synergy with enough density of retail in the location is, you know, we don't want to move backwards, turning existing retail places back into office. We want to move forward, increasing our retail. So, with that, I would, well, do we want me to make a motion, or do we want to let others discuss first?
Any other discussion from council? Councilmember Black?
Yep. I've been here since two thousand eight, and Coolidge is as vibrant, I think, as we've ever seen it. I was just recently there before the council meeting, had coffee and bark, so, and I'll be going to see Dr. Nick tomorrow, cheap plug, my chiropractor. So, you know, I certainly respect Mr. Haberman's, you know, right, and I get it, and there's a strong part of me that wants to say, "Give him an opportunity," because we do want outside investors into our community, but I think that there is a bigger opportunity, especially when you think about the master plan, and we think about strong neighborhoods and walkable, you know, communities and the things that we, that we talk about, and we eventually have to kind of come back to that and say, you know, which of these directions fit who we say we want to be. And so, I think that's, that's going to determine my vote tonight is, are we saying who we want to be?
Thank you. Go ahead. Councilmember Black?
Hi. Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I share the sentiments of my colleagues here. As a resident, longtime resident of the city, having a downtown that's vibrant and walkable and things is personally of interest, and of course, my role here is not to represent me, it's to represent the community at large, and from what we've heard tonight and what we've seen over the last several years with the success of the events, and even on any given, any given day walking around, there's, there's folks out there enjoying that weren't able to do that before. I do think that having more retail is important, and I'll offer two quick thoughts. First, you remember, you guys probably do like Halloween, right, where you give out candy and all that? You know, it's, it's always interesting to see the parts of the street that is dark, 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 and then one lone little lamppost right there, right, where someone's waiting for some, "Please, some kid get lost and come here so I can give you all my candy." You know, that kind of thing. I don't want our downtown to be like that, right? I want to have like every porch light on where kids can come and get candy, or in this case, you know, shop and eat and do awesome things. So, it's, it's the vision that I have in my head. And as far as helping to be a bit more programmatic about this, perhaps something that we could think about is an analogy to the fund balance ratios and percentages that we've, we've talked about. In the city, we're managed through funds, those funds have a target balance, we want to try to stay in line with that balance. We don't want to get too high on it, we don't want to get too low. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to put some thought into informing our, what our downtown retail balance is and, and making that something that we can strive for to help with these kinds of decisions. Of course, every one of these needs to be made individually, but just understanding the direction where we want to go, to my colleague's point, so what kind of downtown do we want to be? Do we want to be a downtown that closes at five o'clock, or do we want to be a downtown that closes at ten o'clock or eleven o'clock? You know, those are the kinds of things that those numbers could help us, help us with. So, that may be some work for, for us in the coming months and, and things to have that as an additional tool to help us. I oppose the, the last one of these that came to council that was proposing office instead of retail, and, and I'll do so again tonight.
Thank you.
Might I make a further comment? I know I only had the three minutes.
No, public comments are closed. Any other discussion from council?
Uh, two things. One, great last name, we're not related, I just want to set that straight. I wish I could take credit for some of the things in that store. The other thing is, I am the liaison to the planning commission. I was a planning commissioner before. Looking at this applicant, I don't think that they meet the standards set forth, and I don't feel like they meet the master plan at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Filani?
Uh, this, this is definitely a very challenging decision that we have in front of us. I, myself echoing what many other council members have said, I would love to see retail in there, and hearing that there hasn't been bites from a retail buyer is disheartening. I do agree with Councilmember Henin that it is still a bit early at this time. I think while I would ultimately like to see any business over a shuttered door, I agree that we, we owe it to, which is, it's hard because Susan did create such an amazing space and vibrancy in Coolidge, and for it to be almost feeling like the other side of the coin right now really makes this hard. I do have a question for our attorney based on some conversation pre-meeting, and given Councilmember Henin's comment that it is early, should the owner, like should a period of time go by and the owner, you know, come back either with different plans? Like, what are their options, I think, for us to also understand and for the residents to understand that?
and hearing that there hasn't been bites from a retail buyer is disheartening. I do agree with Councilmember Henin that it is still a bit early at this time. I think while I would ultimately like to see any business over a shuttered door, I, I agree that we, we owe it to, uh, which is, it's hard, because Susan did create such an amazing space and vibrancy in Coolidge. And for it to be almost feeling like the other side of the coin right now really makes this hard. I do have a question, um, for our attorney, based on some conversation pre-meeting. And given Councilmember Henin's, uh, comment that it is early, uh, should, uh, the owner, like, should a period of time go by and the owner, you know, come back either with different plans? Like, what are their options, I think, for us to also understand and for the residents to understand that it's not just a, a no, but there are still options for her?
Uh, yes. So in answer to your question, if, if the council voted no, and then at sometime at a later date, Mr. Haberman would have to go through the same process again, um, through the Planning Commission. There would have to be a public hearing and public comment. There would be a recommendation, and then again, it would come to council.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M twenty twenty-four.
Gavin?
No.
Henin?
No.
Patterson?
No.
Vilani?
No.
Baker?
No.
Black?
No.
Dean?
No. M twenty twenty-four has failed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number ten on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M twenty-one twenty-four, matter of approving the appointment to boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M twenty-one twenty-four?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Henin. Mr. Baumgarten.
Uh, Lady Mayor, there's a single appointment recommended for council this evening. It's a ZBA alternate position. Uh, the ZBA board has, uh, several full members, uh, but they also have two alternate members at any given time, too. So there's continuity in the decision-making for that board. Craig Childers is, uh, one applying for this. He'll be fulfilling a partial term, uh, filling one that was previously vacated, uh, when a, a previous alternate was promoted, if you will, to a, uh, full board position. So that is the only one available for you this evening. It's been reviewed by, uh, staff liaison, uh, the ZBA chair, as well as the council liaison, uh, Mr. Henin.
Thank you. Uh, are there any public comments on this agenda item? Discussion from council. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M twenty-one twenty-four.
Henin?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M twenty-one twenty-four has passed. Mr. Childers, congratulations on your appointment to be the alternate. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number eleven on tonight's agenda.
Resolution number R five twenty-four, matter of adopting a resolution urging state leaders to address the inadequacy of state statutory revenue sharing and encouraging other Michigan cities to join in this effort.
Is there a motion to approve R zero five twenty-four?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Henin with support from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgarten.
Uh, Lady Mayor, many of the challenges that Berkeley faces with its revenue, specifically those revenues that come from the state, are not unique to our own community. The state in many situations has chosen, and by state, we mean specifically the legislature, has chosen on several occasions to, uh, change or short shrift, uh, the communities in which it is supposed to be serving and supposed to be funding at a much higher rate. Uh, there are two portions of revenue sharing, the constitutional, which they're unable to touch. Uh, we want to focus here on the statutory revenue sharing, which, as you can imagine, uh, by being statutory, it is the discretion of the legislature. Uh, you can see there is information, and this is pulled from, uh, the Michigan Treasury Department's, uh, numbers. You can see where there's a, uh, table provided, uh, that shows the cumulative effect of, uh, us not receiving a funding level where we should, uh, per this, how this program was originally envisioned. And the application itself, or the resolution itself is one, as the motion says, is being shared by many Michigan municipalities. We're not the first one to, uh, consider approval on this, and hopefully we are by, uh, no near, nowhere near the last. Having just attended, uh, Capitol Conference last week, uh, council members know that this is a pain that is felt across the entirety of the state. All of Michigan's, uh, villages and townships, um, as well as its cities are feeling some level of pain, uh, from this, and we would like to see some changes. Um, as MML reported, there's some hope on the horizon, uh, but we're still, we have the cumulative effect of years of disinvestment to, to overcome here. So all that is in the text, uh, of this, and so hopefully, once this, if this is passed, uh, we can join our voices to many others.
Thank you. Any public input on this agenda item? Discussion from council? Councilmember Baker?
Ditto. We heard that, yeah.
Councilmember Henin.
Yeah, and I just want to point out one thing. This isn't a resolution asking for the state to increase our taxes. This is to, for them to re-allow Kate back to the old formula that they used to give cities, towns, and villages, so that we have the money to invest in, say, HVAC systems, uh, and can continue to maintain our facilities. So this isn't asking for more taxes. This is asking to put it into local control where, uh, we know the needs better than what the state does.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on R zero five twenty-four.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. R zero five twenty-four has passed. We've come now to the communication portion of the evening. Ms. Mitchell, who will go first?
Mayor Pertham Gavin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, just briefly, excuse me. The library board will meet March twentieth at seven PM, uh, at the library. Parks and Rec Advisory Board will meet this Thursday, um, at seven PM in the community center. And I'm sure that my colleagues will be speaking about it as well, uh, so I'm not going to jump out front. They can, they can, uh, talk about the MML conference, Michigan Municipal League Conference, but, uh, my comments are just more geared towards, highlighting, congratulating Mayor Dean on her completion of Level Three of Elected Officials Academy, and Councilmember Henin, uh, on his completion of Level Four of the EOA. Both are highly significant and show a level of commitment to deepen their knowledge of local government and bringing back those best practices to the city. Um, so I just want to say congratulations on your achievements, uh, and thank you for the time and effort you put into making our city better.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Councilmember Vilani?
Thank you. Uh, so for the Environmental Advisory Committee, there is a meeting tomorrow on the second floor of the Public Safety Building at six thirty, so all are welcome to attend that. And also mark your calendars, even though it doesn't feel like it today. Coming up in the spring, the native plant sale will be here on Sunday, May nineteenth, uh, from ten AM to two PM at the, uh, Parks and Recs, the Community Center Building. From the Berkeley Area Chamber, the upcoming Chamber Chat is going to be on April nineteenth from eight thirty to nine thirty AM. All are welcome to attend. This will be at Berkeley Eyewear on Coolidge. Uh, also a plug, we have a special anniversary with one of our businesses here. Olmans is going to be celebrating their fifth anniversary tomorrow from five to seven PM. They are going to have a little party, and you can call, email, or visit the store to RSVP, but if you show up, you can enjoy a tea, cocktail, raffles, freebies, and specials, and congratulate them on helping to anchor that Coolidge corridor. And then last but not least, want to plug that March is Reading Month, and we are so fortunate to have a wonderfully curated library, incredibly helpful librarians, uh, with resources for everybody. Also right up on the road on Coolidge, not to beat that horse there, um, but it's a great spot. Um, and also just want to extend my congrats to my colleagues on their awards at MML, and it was just great to spend every ti, uh, time with everyone learning.
Thank you. Councilmember Patterson?
Thank you. You guys took the big awards, so, uh, also congratulations to both of you. Uh, the Planning Commission meeting tomorrow, March nineteenth, has been canceled. There was no applicants if anybody was standing outside waiting to get in tomorrow. Uh, there is a special meeting on April tenth, um, for a proposed daycare on Mortenson, to go over zoning ordinance's steering committee and the zoning ordinance rewrite some of the following questions. It is Reading Month, and our very own Matt Church was also recently published in the Journal of our, uh, Journal of Library Administration, and congratulations to him. It was a great article, if you get a chance to read it.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Caitlin spoke wonderfully about the new website, and so the current Committee on Technology and Engagement is taking applications for our reappointments, and we're going to be doing that through April thirtieth, so we encourage everyone that is thinking about it to, to get engaged. So we're very excited as we get closer and closer to a relaunch of these two committees into one. And then I just want to say, I know that as we start to get into baseball and softball season, you're going to get those, those fundraisers, so I just want to say, as a, as a softball parent, like, let's, let's, let's help our, our batters out. Cause you know, you know what it is, so as they get out there. But, uh, no, spring's afoot, and so baseball and softball, kids need our help, so let's help them out where we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, very briefly, uh, the Tree Board is going to meet, uh, March twenty-fifth, and, uh, the Zoning Board of Appeals will meet, uh, April eighth for a, uh, side yard generator. Thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
That's me. Hi, thanks. Uh, Historical Committee met last week's Tuesday evening. Uh, and, um, as you saw from them earlier today, there was a tremendous, uh, support for, uh, for Mayor, uh, um, Fraser. And the display is up throughout the month in the museum, and they're still open tonight, uh, for those of us who are still here. And you want to just, uh, take one last look, or maybe learn something new about the city, please come check out the museum. Uh, the museum is also open Wednesdays from ten AM to one PM, Sundays from two until four, and online at BerkeleyHistory.com. Our Downtown Development Authority, DDA, met the very next day, and I want to thank Andy Gilbert, uh, the now former chair of the, of the DDA for his many years of service. Tremendous work, vision, leadership, passion, uh, to help make many of the projects that we now take for granted, how to make those happen in the first place. So, so thank you to him. I'd like to congratulate Mateo Pasalakwa and to, and to Desiree here for her, uh, stepping up in leadership here, uh, until we have, uh, the next batch of elections, uh, in, uh, you know, in July here for the new term. Uh, but I know we're in good hands. And I'd also like to thank Tim Barnes for his service, uh, representing Twelve Mile. Uh, and so as part of the DDA process, um, they, it's structured to have four representatives from Coolidge, four representatives from, uh, Twelve Mile, and then four at large, including the school district. And the, the, the city manager is the, uh, official secretary of the board, so two other residents at large, uh, are, uh, part of that process. So we'll be filling two seats, one on Coolidge and one on Twelve Mile, which is great. Hooray for Leprechaun's Night Out, uh, last Thursday, and look for more really fun things here coming up. And to learn about those fun things, go to DowntownBerkeley.com. And finally, it was Margaret Wheatley who once said, "There is no power for change greater than a community discovering what it cares about." And I offer that not only for us and the conversations we've had tonight, and the visions that we have for our, for our community going forward. Uh, but as mentioned, you know, I too was at the MML Capitol Conference and had the pleasure of moderating one of the sessions. The one that I had the pleasure of serving on was, uh, was with the notion of Community Excellence Awards. So the MML, uh, again, is a, is a ensemble of municipalities from the entire state. Five hundred and thirty-five cities, which is pretty crazy. Cities, villages, townships. Recent awards have gone to the cities of Bridgman and Cassopolis. Uh, the leaders from those communities came to present not specifics about their projects, but specifics about their thought process of how they go about delivering projects that add value and passion, uh, to their communities, which was recognized at the state level, uh, with those Community Excellence Awards. And I'll offer up just three of the tidbits that they offered, which I think we can absolutely apply here. Uh, and so, you know, as we think about the kind of work that we've done and the kinds of work yet to come, there's every opportunity for Berkeley to be up on that stage, uh, and win the cup, uh, cause there actually is a cup and everything. It's really cool. They have this notion of watering the bamboo. I don't know if anyone knows what, uh, what that means, water the bamboo. But the, the general gist of it is, is that the, the bamboo stalks, the bamboo trees, uh, take years and years and years before they break through the ground. So when you plant the seedlings and stuff, it takes a very long time before they break through the ground. And yet you have to still water the bamboo, because you know it's coming. You know it's going to happen. And so obviously, that means like things take time, and plant those seeds, and continue to invest, knowing that your vision is true. Like, you want to have this thing, and it takes time to get there. So I thought that was great. Uh, power to the people. Uh, again, back to the, the passion of the volunteers. I'm so pleased to see the report from the Tree Board, uh, the passion that they bring in our various other committees, and we had a strong presence from Historical here tonight. Uh, that's what makes these things grow. And so as we look for projects that the municipality can help support and make happen, we'll need support from the businesses and from the residents to bring these projects to life and make them exciting and engaging for all of us. And finally, uh, progress involves risk, and so it's the notion of taking prudent leaps, right? To understand that, you know, hey, we've never done a thing like X before, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't consider it, right? And, uh, one of the, the philosophies with that is, rather than saying, here's why we can't, explore what would it take to, right? What would it take to? And you may get to the same answer. The answer might be, it won't work, but how you get there is fundamentally different, right? To say, oh, here's why that won't work, blah, 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 right? You know, that's one way to get to know, and you get there pretty quick. Uh, if you were to say, here's what it takes to, that could engage, engages folks like the, the passionate volunteers, our educated, uh, you know, um, city staff and, and the folks that are here to help make all this stuff work. It engages them in the thought process of exploring what would it take to, you know, it opens up creative options to explore ways that it could work. Doesn't mean it will. Like I said, you could get back to that same answer of, no, this won't work, but how you get there is fundamentally more engaging, more educational, and it brings people together, even if they say, well, here's why we can't do this thing. It's because of this, this, and this, you know, as opposed to, oh, City Hall said no, you know, that kind of thing. So that's, I think that's great. Uh, it's really good stuff, uh, and I love those kinds of sessions, because it's hands-on, practical stuff that we can bring back. And I'm sharing it here with Berkeley, and others, other folks like me are sharing it with their communities as well. And that's one of the big values of the MML. And so congrats to you guys on your journey. I know it's, uh, it's a very rewarding experience, and pleased to, to see you guys in there, too. It's awesome. And finally, you know how I close these things. Uh, please hug somebody that you love. Uh, it's, it's, it's an important expression of humanity, uh, and it, it means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I likewise wanted to congratulate Mr. Church, uh, now published author Church, uh, on the work that he did, he has done up to this point, and then the article itself. Uh, if you do have a chance to read it, it really does speak from a level of authority. Um, he is absolutely on the cutting edge of his field. He is someone that, uh, his peers look up to, uh, and someone that we've always been, held a lot of respect for internally amongst our department directors. So he's certainly one to emulate. Um, also want to update, uh, council and the community on the budget. Uh, we do have, we are on track to have the, uh, the draft budget out in the early April, ahead of our normal schedule from years past, but we've, uh, been able to, for the first time in a couple of years, kind of overhaul that process, work, uh, more directly with, um, some of the right leaders in finance that we've been able to, to elevate and put in a good spots. Uh, and want to also, as always, congratulate our department directors for the work that they put into this budget. Their knowledge, their expertise, and the things that they need, uh, in order to continue to serve the public is second to none. And so they continue to put in a ton of time, uh, not just in service to the community, boots in the ground, but also make sure that they are planning ahead in a way that makes sense. And then, um, again, maybe not fully waters the bamboo, but, uh, certainly lays the seeds for, for future success. So, uh, that process is ahead of schedule, and it's going to yield fruit in early April. Uh, and then council will, of course, have its opportunity to go, uh, through the budget, uh, point by point by point over the course of their budget work sessions. So, uh, good things happening in that regard. Look forward to reporting that to the public.
Thank you. Attorney Crist?
I have nothing this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. So I too would like to wish Uli and Roman congratulations on your fifth anniversary. As a former small business owner, I know what an accomplishment that is, and I know how hard you're working, so thank you for that. And, and all that you bring, um, to your little corner of Coolidge. I, the last time I was in the store, I think it was over the holidays, and I, I saw Uli, and I just said to her, the, I feel like I'm coming home when I come into your store. Like, the vibe is just so great, and it's peaceful, and that your staff is helpful, and you have such, oops, such a wonderful selection of, you know, I always go in to buy a gift, and I come out with five things. But, um, one for the gift, and then some for me. So that's, uh, it's also a testimony to the great work that you're doing there. So congratulations, and, and thank you for, for staying and for being. You're welcome. So, um, having just come back from the MML conference, which you've heard, uh, other council members reference, um, I really enjoyed the opportunity to network with other elected officials from all over the state, and I learned a lot of things, and just a couple of them was, one, many of the problems or challenges that we face in Berkeley are being faced by other villages, towns, and municipalities. We are not alone in, in the challenges that we face, and it just felt good to, you know, get together and talk to others about that, and see what other, some people are doing, what other ideas that people have. So that was, I don't know, refreshing, I think. Um, and I've been, been know, refreshing, I think, and I've been reflecting on many things, but one thing in particular came up at the Michigan Women and Municipal Government Luncheon that councilmember Vilani and I attended, and that was the notion of, you know, why do people work in local government? And they work in local government because they want to make a difference. At the end of the day, that's really why, why people do it. And so I just want to give a shout out to all of our department heads, our city staff, the fine work that you do every day, you come in, I see you, you come in early, you stay late, you're engaging with customers across the counter, whether that's the library counter, the DPW counter, the counter here in City Hall, you're on the phone with people, and here's the deal, it might be your 27th phone call of the exact same question, you're still smiling, you're still speaking in a modulated tone, you still have patience. Now, and I know how hard that is, I see you getting out of your patrol cars to shoot baskets with kids in the park, I see you giving a three-year-old a tour of the fire hall, and just the wide-eyed amazement at, you know, who doesn't love a fire truck, I don't care if you're three or 100. And I know that, and while we don't see this, our DPW department, while we're home sleeping, they're fixing water mains, they're taking care so that we can live the life that we chose to live here in Berkeley. So I can see and feel the good work that you're doing, and the pride that you bring to your roles every day, and for that, I thank you. Please don't let anyone make you feel anything but proud of who you are, do not make anyone, or allow anyone to make you feel less than because you're not. You get to determine your worth, you get to decide that. So I appreciate you and all the difference that you make in our community every day. Thank you. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Some support.
Okay. Motion made by councilmember Patterson with support from Mayor Pro Tem Gavin. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The Monday, March 18th, 2024 meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned. Oh, my God.